Waters.
Catherine.
Thank you.
Capron.
Sure, I'm here.
Greckin.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Scott.
Here. Put your pin, put your home rule pins on them, I got you.
What's up, buddy?
We need a motion to go into closed session to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price the city would have to pay for that property, reduce the price it would receive. Session, City Council, discuss strategy with council about matters where litigation is imminent because public disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the city in that litigation. There's second?
Second.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Moore?
Yeah, don't stick me.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Thanks. I don't know. I need that. I just bought a deal to put him in. That's an original.
See it?
Thanks.
Oh, I got blood on me.
Appreciate that. Wow. Call the roll, please.
Moore?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Capron?
Here.
Second.
Here.
Can we stand for a moment, a silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a proclamation today that I don't have to read at the podium, but I'll read it here. Whereas home rule is essential to effective and responsive municipal governance in Iowa and provides flexibility to make decisions at the local level, where decisions are made closest to the people they impacting, can be tailored to fit local conditions, needs, and concerns in order to better serve taxpayers. And whereas the City of Sioux City supports home rule and the powers it provides to make local decisions that best reflect the residents of our community. And whereas the citizens of Iowa approved the adoption of the home rule in the Constitution on November 5th, 201968, and where this is the 50th year of municipal home rule in Iowa. And whereas home rule continues to be vital to the health and prosperity of all cities in Iowa, now therefore I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby recognize the 50th anniversary of home, municipal home rule in Iowa and proudly support its continued authority. That's why a lot of us are wearing buttons today. I'll be very non-political, but because it doesn't, this isn't a political statement because it doesn't seem to matter, but over the last 10 to 12 years, the legislature, whether they be Republican or Democrat, have done more to take away home rule in our state than they have to add to it. In fact, we have a lot less things that cities can do today than we could have done 10 to 12 years ago, which is, in my opinion, terribly unfortunate that, that the legislature doesn't trust local officials to make decisions that seem to be in the best interest of our citizens. So with that, I'll go to the consent agenda, which today is items two through 16G. You can consider items to pass unanimously unless a council member asks for a vote. If you want to speak on an item, please come forward and state your name and address as I read that item. If it's not on the agenda today, please come up under Citizen Concerns. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Two is the reading of the City Council minutes of April 23rd and 25th, 2018. Three is a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment Actions for April 24th, 2018. Four is a motion approving the award of the Hunt Elementary School Site Improvements Projects. I need to abstain on that.
I need to abstain. Conflict of interest.
I do have a question, though. I think the contract will be starting quickly and do, have we given all of that land away to the school board for a dollar so we can, and other valuable considerations? Where are we at on that? Because we've had these guys working in our right of ways.
Brittany Anderson.
We shouldn't. We should, if they're going to start construction, we should have the land transferred.
Brittany Anderson, City Engineering Department, we've executed the 208E agreement.
That doesn't transfer property.
I don't know. I don't think it's all been.
We just are transferring today, and, and that's my problem. Bryant School's almost done. We're up there with all kinds of liability.
The property has not been transferred yet.
I understand that. The question is, when?
I'll have to get the schedule. As Brittany mentioned, there was a 208E agreement, but I don't know for sure when that's going to go forward. I'll check and report back.
When I, I would just say, in, in addition or with the mayor's concerns, I would just urge staff to make sure that they're not working, because I think that they were doing quite a bit of work, and if someone would get injured on that property, it still comes back to us. So just making sure that they at least hold up till there has been the transfer of property. If staff could help with that, I would greatly appreciate it.
And I know there still are remaining issues related to utilities and easements in the right of way that have not been completely taken care of as of yet.
Does the 208E agreement protect us? They're, they're going to tear up alleys to put in parking lots.
But for now, though, I mean, as a.
I, I understand that, but you can't tell me at Bryant School that we're transferring today. They haven't been working in our right of way because they're building a school on that right of way.
And staff has talked internally in the 208Es when they come forward for council approval. The plan is to get real estate involved because oftentimes they don't know that the transfers should be happening. So internally, we need to change that process. So it goes forward right away and the transfers are completed in close proximity to the 208E agreements being executed.
The five are resolutions assessing unpaid Skywalk operation charges against 622 Fourth Street. Six is a resolution approving the renewal option one with Hawkins for the purchase of aluminum sulfate, sulfate. Seven is a resolution proposing to sell property at 2714 Vine. The petitioner, Daniel and Karina R. Walsh. Eight are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution authorizing parks and rec to apply for an Iowa Tennis Association Community Development Grant for $1,000 for youth tennis programs. B is a resolution approving the annual action plan for the Sioux City Consortium in conjunction with the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership, and Emergency Solutions Grant Program. Nine are actions relating to street closure. Yes.
Sorry.
Sorry.
So sorry to interrupt. I'm Jill Wondershey, Neighborhood Services Manager. I just wanted to mention briefly, publicly, we did receive our allocations from HUD since we did do the draft plan that you all have a copy of. We planned for about 1.5 million in CDBG. We actually received about 1.6 million in CDBGs. That was great news for us. And we also planned for about 350,000 in home, and we are receiving 472,000 in home. On the flip side, we planned for 135,000 in ESG, and we will be receiving zero in ESG this year because of the way the formula allocation worked. The state of Iowa will still receive their ESG. This happened once before for us in 2014. So we will encourage our agencies to work directly with the state of Iowa to get their ESG funding this year.
To do what? What's it do?
Um, the ESG is the, anything related to homeless prevention. So Center for Sioux Land Community Action received ESG funds from us. They are still eligible to receive those, but they will be coming from the state instead of the city.
Is that program ending, or why did we not receive? I mean.
It's a complicated.
Wouldn't you hear from other cities?
Sure. Um, like I said, the last time this happened to us was in 2014. It, um, it all stems from the formula allocations for CDBG. They based it off of that. And so it's just kind of, a lot of cities will go in and out depending on how they justify it. But it's.
But if they based it on that, how would we receive more allocation, but then less allocation there?
Right.
You got more allocation because they, as a whole, granted more money. They put more money in the budget.
And they also take a look at the American Community Survey results that come out each year that talk about how much housing we have in our community as a part of the census. And so they also take that into account. To be honest, I've asked for a very detailed account from our HUD representative as far as how that is calculated, and she's not been able to provide that to me. So I'm still waiting. We just got these the middle of last week, so.
All right. Thanks, Jill.
Thank you.
Nine are actions relating to street closures. A is a resolution temporary closing various streets near Grand View Park, July 7th through July 8th for Saturday in the park. B is a resolution temporary closing various streets in Leeds, June 9th through June 10th for the Leeds Community Days Dance and Car Show. A is a resolution temporary closing various streets in Leeds on June 8th for the Leeds Community Days Parade. Ten are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a Skybox sublease agreement with Irving Jensen Jr. and the Sioux City Explorers Baseball Club. B is a resolution approving Amendment Number Two to the Consulting Services Agreement with DGR Engineering for the Lewis and Clark Park Facility Upgrades. C is a resolution authorizing a First Amendment to the 208E Agreement for Medical Emergency Response Services for Dakota Valley Emergency Services District. D is a resolution approving the contract performance bond with Nelson Construction for the 2018 Discovery Parking Ramp Repair Project. E is a resolution approving a contract to Mark Albinicious for the 7th Nebraska Street Hydrant Repair Project. F is a resolution awarding a contract to Steve Harris Construction for the Bridgeport West Harbor Drive Realignment Project.
This is way below the engineer's estimate. And I know we take note on when the engineer's estimate is so high and the bid comes in so low. Is there any reason for that?
Gordon Ferret, City Engineer. None that I know of at this point. I didn't really look into that, or why it was the difference, but I can.
I, I can speak to that a little bit. Brett Langley, Civil Engineer. I believe HR Green based their prices for this year's project on the prices they received from last year's project. That was the basis of their estimate, and for some reason, the costs from the contractor came in significantly cheaper this time around. So we'd probably have to look into what caused the prices to be so high last year, possibly.
So the, the costs are lower this year than they are from the last?
Correct.
What caused? You mean the job?
The job itself, yes.
Yeah, you got four bids, five bids, and they're all under the engineer's estimate. So I hate to tell you that, so you guys aren't always right. I mean, it's just the market determines what the prices should be.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Well, it's about a $270,000 difference. It's about a $270,000 difference.
Well, they'll be able to analy, analyze the bid tab and in the future, use those numbers for going forward, I'm sure. But part of the problem is, from what I understand, is we have right of way, which is, I talked to Bob about, and then you guys are not going to get a lot of projects out. So contractors are running scared right now that there's not going to be work.
That is correct.
Not a really good deal out there. You should have some out. At these prices, we should be bidding more rather than less.
Well, they always got change orders. They can always add to it.
That is the opposite way to be thinking, right? J is a resolution approving a Consulting Services Agreement with McClure Engineering for Glenn Avenue from South Cecilia Street to South Ruston Street, the Reconstruction Project. H is a resolution approving a procurement contract with Submental Phased Services to Andritz Separation Technologies for the Asset Renewal Phase One De-watering and Order Control Procurement Project.
Mayor, on this one, Mark, same thing, that the engineer's estimates just almost double.
This actually de-watering?
Yes, sir, it is.
Now, that can vary crazy.
Mark Sims, Utilities Director. Uh, I'm not here to explain engineer's estimates because I'm not an engineer, and I don't want to claim to be one, but I think probably a couple of factors here, Dan. Uh, one is, uh, the equipment that we already have is Andritz. I assume they want to continue to be our supplier, and so maybe that's part of the reason that they wanted the work as badly as they did. Uh, I think that the engineer's estimate originally was obtained by calling several different manufacturers and, and at the time, that was the prices that our engineers received. So, um, if you'd like further explanation, I can ask them to provide some documentation or, or, uh.
I'm just trying to understand why there's a, that big of a difference, and I rely on the engineer's estimate a lot of times for, are we within the ballpark? And when it's way low, it's like, what, there's got to be something missing, but maybe you're telling me there's nothing missing.
No, no, the technology itself is, is good for us, and it, it's good that it's the same manufacturer that we currently have. It benefits our employees as far as maintenance.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
I is a resolution approving Amendment Number Two Consulting Services Agreement with HR Green for the Riverfront Sanitary Sewer and Scepter Cleaning and Televising Project. J is a resolution approving a contract to Thompson Electric for the Tyson Event Center Biting retrofit project. I need to abstain. K is a resolution approving a termination agreement with Historic Properties Block Three for the redevelopment Warrior at 525 Pier Street, which is an incorrect address. Staff will request a motion to amend. Would you like to do that for us so we can do it?
I would. Amber Haggerty, Assistant City Attorney. The address was incorrectly listed as 525 Pier Street. It is 525 Sixth Street. We would ask for a motion to amend to reflect that change.
I'll move the amendment.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Abstain.
L is a resolution approving change order number three to the contract. Now, this does have change orders. Under your right.
Come on, I don't know about.
L are actions relating to personnel. A is a resolution amending Position Classification Manual by approving updated job description for professional administrative technical supervisory, executive and council-appointed employee positions. In the future, I would like to know what the change in the pay is for this. I know that's going to pass. I have no doubt it'll pass, even if I was opposed to it, but could we at least know what the difference in the pay grade does on these things? You give a nice description, but you don't tell us what it's going from.
This is Janelle Bertrand, Human Resources Director. There is no change in the salary. It's merely duties, minimum qualifications, and essential functions.
No change whatsoever.
Right. You'd be the first to know.
I'm not buying that, but okay. B is a resolution amending the Position Classification Manual by approving updated job description for asking positions. Twelve are actions authorizing the issuance of checks. A is a resolution amending Resolution Number 218-0191, revising the amounts of final pay and retainage for the 2017 Utility Flatwork Project. B is a resolution authorizing final payment at Sioux City Community School District for the Bryant School Site Improvement Project.
Need to abstain on that item?
C is a resolution approving settlement of a damage claim and authorizing payment to Peter Street Partners. D is a resolution approving payment of a work comp award to Robert Nelson. E is a resolution approving payments of a work comp award to Gus Theros. Thirteen is approving total checks issued for the reporting of April 2018 in the amount of $7,911,779.48. Fourteen are applications for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits. See the list come forward if you have questions. Fifteen, applications for beer and liquor license. See the list come forward if you have questions. Sixteen, receipt of minutes. See the list come forward if you have questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items, please come forward.
Nicole, would you include me on 12C for abstaining? And Martin?
I will note it.
Thanks.
Well, C also.
Yes. Yes, please.
Waiting for one vote.
Apologies.
Pass is 5-0 unless otherwise noted. Recommendations of P&amp;Z. Seventeen is a hearing and ordinance rezoning 1501 Floyd Boulevard. Petitioner Dolph Ivner, P&amp;Z recommends approval.
Susan Stewart, Chair of Planning and Zoning. We didn't have anyone speaking on this item other than the petitioner. There were not a lot of questions about, about this. He wants to build a mini-storage-type facilities, and it was made apparently abundantly clear. That's about the only thing you could put on that parcel.
I'll move it.
Second.
It does look to me like in and out of there is going to be a problem, but you guys are better.
We were obviously just rezoning. There were questions about access points and things like that, which are left for, you know, some future development of the area.
Pass is 5-0. Is anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move it.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. I'll move second and third. Or, I mean, yeah, I'll move second and third.
Second.
Pass is 5-0. Eighteen is a hearing and ordinance rezoning 35 and a half Hale Street. Petitioners, David Berger, P&amp;Z recommends approval.
This, this was another rezoning classification, really intended to allow the construction of a single-family house on a large parcel of property. There was no opposition to this. There were a couple of questions about access and easements and the like.
I'll move it.
Second.
Pass is 5-0. Anybody opposed to move, to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move it.
Second.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
I'll move second and third.
Second.
Pass is 5-0. Nineteen is a hearing and ordinance vacating part of Prescott Street and the East-West Alley adjacent to 2601 West 22nd Street. Petitioners, James Marksberry, P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move it.
Uh, this was a vac, a vacation of a portion of an alley. It's already being used by the petitioner, and there was no opposition or really much commentary on it.
Need a second, or did we do that?
We did.
Dan got it.
Pass is 5-0. Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
Move it.
Second.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
I'll move second and third.
Second.
Pass is 5-0. Twenty is a hearing and ordinance rezoning 4021 Indian Hills Drive. Petitioner Brad Cummings Construction. P&amp;Z recommends approval.
Items 20 and 21 are the rezoning of preliminary plat associated with this Indian Hills Court development that is going to create a cul-de-sac with, I think twin homes is what they're called. I think it's 12 twin homes. We had no one, uh, we had one, a budding landowner who had some questions about how this was going to affect his property. He seemed satisfied with the questions, the answers from the petitioner. Um, there was some commentary from the planning and zoning members about this, the, the placement of the sewer, the city sewer lines in the area, but there was really no opposition either from the commissioners nor from any member of the public.
I'll move it.
Second.
I noted that the staff recommends approval of both the rezoning and the preliminary plat, which Susan just spoke about, with the condition the petitioner has an updated preliminary plat, plat with the sanitary sewer being located on the street. Has that been done? Or is that follow-up at what point? And are they in agreement?
Chris Madigan, Senior Planner. We have not received an updated preliminary plat as of yet. If council were to approve and make that a condition of their approval, we could move forward.
That's staff's recommendation, isn't it?
To include, yeah, moving the sanitary.
Yes.
We would still want to see that updated plan.
Well, yeah, because we're only doing preliminary, right?
Correct.
So do we? Everything's okay, or do we need to?
See, I think the motion.
On the motion for the preliminary plat, we would still ask that that be included.
That be included.
With what we approved.
Correct.
Does that require a motion then, to amend or?
The first item is the rezoning.
Uh, we'll get to that next item.
Oh, okay, okay. Then the other thing I was going to ask about was the, uh, the discussion, uh, talks about, uh, traffic concerns and the speed limit on Indian Hills Drive. North of Outer Drive, there are no speed limit signs going up to 41st Street. So I assume.
We're all law-abiding citizens that drive that every day.
Well, I, I understand that. I understand that. And I assume then that it'll be 35 and there is going north, but it's on the south side of Outer Drive.
There was some commentary. There, I think, a couple of comments, Chris, weren't there from people who had concerns about basically speed on 41st Street, and I think the way the city engineering answered that was that those were matters that would be considered as the area develops, and they have some actual traffic to base a determination on. Is that right, Chris, or?
The two. Indian Hills Drive, a four-way stop. Currently, there's only a stop going north-south, not east-west.
Yes.
Um, and engineering did respond that they could look at those items as the property is being developed, and if there's any need for either speed limit or four-way stop.
Okay.
It doesn't matter what you posted. People are going to drive whatever they want to out there because there's no patrol, and putting stop signs in there is not going to solve the problem, but that's okay.
One other question for me. Uh, also, it says the discussion, once the properties are completed being built, is when the sidewalks are required, so it could potentially be done in phases. Are we talking about sidewalks being done after all the houses are put up, or after they're being sold, or what's the phases? I'm not.
Code would require that the sidewalk be placed while the house is being built or during the construction of the house.
Okay. Because I think we've had discussions in the past where, where they didn't want to do sidewalks until they had sold the property, and I didn't want that to be the case.
The proposed rewrite of the subdivision code would require four years after development, after the development is complete, that the sidewalks be placed if no house has been built. Currently, that's not part of the code. Right now, it would be as the homes are being constructed.
Okay. Thank you.
We used to have developer bonds that made sure they put sidewalks in. We don't do that anymore?
Up to my knowledge.
Well, you got one lot. What you'll have is one lot that doesn't sell, doesn't have a sidewalk, if you don't have a developer's bond, but.
Did I say something?
Certainly.
Say whatever you want to, Mr. Salem. I know they're going to build so fast, we don't have to worry about sidewalks, but you're, you know, you have a long history in this community, as I do.
And we've put in sidewalks every, on both the previous two projects.
I didn't say you didn't, but if you don't sell a lot, that'll be the sidewalk that doesn't go in if there is an inordinance it requires. That's all I'm saying.
Uh, well, the, I was just going to address the. I was going to address the, what are we talking about, the sidewalks in the, in the, in the cul-de-sac or the sidewalks down the street?
No, in the cul-de-sac. We already have sidewalks going down the street, so we're okay there.
Yeah. Okay, well, they'll be put in. We, we, we have a, a time limit, and we guarantee that it will.
I, I understand that. I'm just saying, if you don't sell a lot, you're not required under our existing ordinance to put a sidewalk in, and we should, we should change that so that after so many years, you have to put it in.
Well, I think it is, isn't it, four years?
Being proposed in the new rewrite of the subdivision code for four years.
We could do it two years. I don't care. We're, we.
That's where I wouldn't go, four years.
I was going to say, four years seems like quite a while, but.
Okay. We're open, we're okay with either one.
You're the, you're the guy that gets it done. We know that. So no worries on our part with you.
Once in a while.
Anyone to be heard?
Well, we could.
Who hasn't voted?
Councilman Greckin.
Really? I'm still thinking. Now, Rhonda and I were having a discussion about sprinklers. It came up in Public Works team meeting today, and in the issue about sprinkling on the right of way and, and causing streets to undermine and all. And there is an issue out in Morningside we've been talking about for the last few weeks, but I, I thought it's probably best handled by maybe out of Public Works having a recommendation to amend the ordinance or create a new ordinance that would prevent that from happening. And it's, it's very.
I suggested that two or three years ago, and you guys all said no, remember?
We changed our mind.
I was going to say, don't say you. You're starting to look.
You're starting to look.
I'm a little slow coming around.
I've seen the light, and I think we should make ordinance.
But it, it's an ongoing problem, so I think it's something we need to talk about Public Works about and try to.
Bring us an ordinance then.
Okay.
Let's vote on this today.
All right.
Okay.
That means I should do it now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready.
Pass is four zero one, Mr. Moore, I'll move it.
Second.
Moore?
Dan?
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
I'll move second and third.
Second.
Pass is four zero one, Mr. Moore abstains. Twenty-one's a motion approving preliminary plat of Indian Hills Court, petitioner is Brad Cummings Construction. I will move that subject to the final plat addressing the sewer line issue.
Second.
Where are all the students from that are so excited to be here?
Harris Youth Commission, let me guess.
Is that what you are?
Yep.
Really excited, right? We're going to move this fast if these guys pay attention. Four to zero to one, Mr. Moore abstains.
We have to be done by seven.
Yeah. Twenty-two's a hearing on a petition to amend the ordinance creating the Sioux City Main Street self-supported municipal improvement district.
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. Also, we have representatives from Downtown Partners available for any questions. I know Reagan would like to say a few words on the stats to date for the signatures, and I'll have her lead off with that. Just thank you.
Thank you. To date, we have five hundred and fifty-eight properties in the district that you're looking at. Ownership required to move this forward was twenty-five percent. We have completed with an eighty-two percent support percentage, and assessment value is the other piece that is twenty-five percent required. We have completed at a seventy-one percent level. I did notice Fern Rockland in the crowd, and I wanted to publicly apologize. When we first had our boundary set, we did a circle in the middle, found out we couldn't do that around Rockland property, so we did not have that on our contact list. That is one contact our board nor I did make during this process, so I wanted to apologize for that. Otherwise, the five hundred and fifty-eight properties, we've been through planning and zoning, and I've worked with Jeff, and I think we have some details on the boundaries for you, but if you have questions, I'm absolutely here to answer.
Staff is not recommending the riverfront.
So the map in front of you, the red boundary is the existing SMID boundary that's in place today. The three blue areas you see highlighted here are proposed by Downtown Partners to be added in for this five-year renewal. Staff agreed, and the Planning and Zoning Commission agreed with these three additional areas. This area, which is dashed in green, is mostly the riverfront area and some area along the interstate and the new interchange here off Interstate twenty-nine. We don't have any issues with the SMID extending into that area. Our only issue is because of the timing, a lot of that property will be redeveloped along with the interstate, and so we felt it was necessary to hold out on this renewal until the next renewal to determine what the highest and best use for that property would be, determine if it should be in the SMID district, and the same with the riverfront. We know what's going to go there, but to make that connection, we need to get through this boundary. So, as you stated, staff did recommend against that just because of the uncertainty of how that area will develop, and if they can benefit from the use of the SMID and Downtown Partners. If the council would like to go forward with the recommendation and request from Downtown Partners, they can add that back in.
But it's not in today?
It's in Downtown Partners' request to have it included. Staff's recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and ultimately that came in front of you, the recommendation was to leave it out. But all the notices were done correctly at the request of Downtown Partners to have it included, so the council has the authority to add it back in.
But as it stands right now, a yes vote is it's out.
The staff's recommendation would be for it to be out, so yes, your vote would be.
Yes.
And my question, Jeff, can you speak a little bit about why staff thinks that it may be inappropriate, or what development could happen there? Because quite frankly, it just doesn't make sense to me of what could be there, that it wouldn't make sense to try to tie it into that.
A lot of this property down in that area is also owned and controlled by the Iowa DOT that they've acquired for the Interstate twenty-nine project, and so some of the development patterns down here will be out of our control. We're going to want some assurance from the DOT that they'll work with us on how that's developed. You know, in the case if it's an interstate-type use that doesn't benefit from a Downtown Partners, that would be our concern, is including it and having that property, because we know they benefit from Downtown Partners. This is just the unknown area at this time.
So if we left it out, we'd have to wait five years to put it back in then, right?
Correct. You could actually add it at any time, but we'd have to go through this process. The campaign itself takes a good six months. We'd have to go back to all fifty-five, five hundred and fifty-eight properties and redo this process again. So we'd probably wait five years, just because it's not something we plan on spending the time doing every year.
Jeff, what's the reverse process? So if we put it in, and you determine that property should not be in, can we take it out, or do you have to wait for the five years on that?
You'd wait five years on that as well, same process.
Yeah, I believe you'd have to wait.
Where does it go on the north boundary?
The north boundary of the.
Of this green dash?
No, no, north boundary, way north. I'm kind of curious.
Up here?
Yeah.
That comes off of West Seventh onto Eighth Street. Comes down Nebraska, encompasses Mercy property, then comes down by the Greek Orthodox Church, and then goes over.
What's right above the blue box there? It wasn't in, what's that right there?
The rest of the Mercy campus was not in, for some reason. I don't know. We just tried to correct as much as we could, so hopefully five years from now, we're not making any adjustments.
I believe that's their parking lot.
Is that the park? Oh, I see, to the north of the blue. I'm sorry, I thought you meant in the blue.
Doesn't do much in here, way.
No.
Well, what do you, wait a minute. Isn't that, if that's Seventh Street.
This would be Sixth Street down here.
That's Sixth.
So like, Security Bank drive-up and all that, that does have an impact on downtown, is not in it? I want my friends from security to be able to pay as much tax as they possibly can, even if it'll affect my dividends a little bit, I don't have much stock to worry about, but why would that not be in? Why would you not go all the way over and pick up Williams &amp; Company and that? Are they in?
This is actually Seventh Street.
Jim's Burger is not in. Like, once you come down Pier Street, once you hit Jim's Burger, that's the line where you hit the SMID district. Coming up much further, I think we agreed geographically and everything as far as we can service, up there you get to the point of residential units and houses and things like that that are hard to define in a district and give credit and supplies to.
Because then you have another business, one to lock up, you have the mommy Mexican restaurant.
Yeah, it could keep going, but I don't foresee that happening, that's too much.
But there's buildings that appear to be part of the downtown that aren't in, but now we want to go to the riverfront. So the only reason I vote to put in the riverfront is that you have some assurances, and I'm trying not to be critical of a guy who's asked for way signs now for five years in this community, and alls I've gotten is lip service for that five years. And I'm sorry, but it starts to wear on you when that's a need in this community that you made me sit in the breakfast and listen to that guy, Brooks, and all those things that he said, and we haven't done anything on it yet. And it's time that we do some projects with this money, or I don't know why we have the SMID to begin with.
Right. I can, I can.
Well, when are we going to do it?
Absolutely. I can tell you, we are in the final phases, actually. We are ready for bid and production within a month. We have just helped put another ten thousand in to pay for the rest of the design to be completed, and we'll go through bid and installation with Jeff and city staff.
So why would we want that in unless you're willing to participate? Because this will have more impact on your downtown than anything else we're going to do in the next fifteen years around here.
I agree. The riverfront and that entry off of Floyd is going to be a major thoroughfare into downtown that we have not been, it hasn't existed before for us, to be quite honest. It will impact wayfinding signage, it will need wayfinding signage, and it's also the major interface to the, to the riverfront, once you come off Floyd.
Yeah. No, I agree completely. I see a lot of interconnectedness. I mean, the people are going to be coming either from downtown and say, hey, let's go check out the riverfront, or hey, we're at the riverfront, let's go.
Are you on their board? Are you on their board?
Yes.
You're our rep. Have we talked about, because the question I'm getting from people is if we talked about what your board's going to be willing to do to help in that riverfront with this SMID money? Because just to vote for this with no assurance, it's tough for me.
Well, I think in the last meeting that we had, we talked about signage with the wayfaring, with wayfarers specifically directing people to and from.
Access the riverfront from downtown, so we talked about lighting those pathways.
At our joint meeting.
Yeah, we talked about a lot of things. That riverfront is something we are very much looking for.
When we talk, it becomes a city project. Are we partners in some of this talk now?
I'd like to think we're partners in pretty much everything we do, Bob, but.
We are, but this, I mean, that's the problem, is we don't, we're voting on this, but we don't have any idea.
Well, and I think we're saying that we have the opportunity to do that then. If you don't include it.
We've had the opportunity to do some signage in downtown for five years, Alex.
I have not been on the council that long, Bob.
Well, I have, and I've been asking for it on an annual basis, that.
I agree.
You create a mighty pen and a mighty tone. If you wanted it done, I'm sure we could have got it done.
Like, August.
I'm only one vote up here, big shot.
It's going to be done.
Well, I'm with you.
It's going to be done. Are you on the board, too?
I'm on the board, too.
You're really moving her ahead, you two.
Yeah, we're just really.
Because if it doesn't happen, we've got two council members that we're going to be looking at a year from now.
And I sit right by you. Don't forget that either.
Striking distance.
As of today, I sit right by you. It's in process, we're close.
Absolutely.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
We are closer than we have ever been in five years.
I would move to include.
Well, you have to have a motion to open the discussion, so you have to have a motion. So the public knows what they're discussing. Are you going to?
Well, you don't want to move the item.
No, I was going to move an amendment to include the riverfront.
And there are two separate items. The first item is a hearing related to the petition.
Right.
And the second item is the action item, which is the motion.
To close the hearing.
Correct.
So we have to make a motion, get it on the floor, then we can ask for public comment.
Well, in the first portion, we can pass, is that right?
You just need to open, you need to vote to open the hearing process.
But first, he wants to amend that. So you, okay, we've got a motion to open it first, then the amendment, so you have to move it, open it first.
So I would move it.
Second.
Okay, then we, then we need to vote on that, or we need to amend it first. Miss City Attorney.
I'm trying to see how it's included in the vote for today.
No, we'd have to move the amendment now.
What motion was just made?
To open it.
Open it for public discussion.
No, amended. And then they vote on it.
Let's get her right.
Yep. We can go ahead, and if you would like to amend at this point, that's fine, and then come back and vote on the action item.
So I would make a motion to include.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, you got a motion on the floor now.
Yeah, and you're going to amend that motion, you can do that.
And you amend it.
Then you vote on the amendment, then you vote on the regular.
Do you move the main?
Yes.
Kids, are you taking notes on this?
Move the amendment, Alex, let's go.
I would move to make an amendment that we include the riverfront development outline in green dashes on the screen.
Second.
Okay, now, public input. Anyone like to be heard? No one would like to be heard.
Jeff, oh, go ahead.
Dave Bernstein, three-ten Virginia Street. We actually bought some property in the SMID. So I would just like to, and I'm a fan of Downtown Partners in general, I've discussed this with Reagan multiple times, but the combination of some dialogue as the casinos were looking at moving into downtown back quite a few years ago, multiple different plans, all in the SMID, and a great windfall to Downtown Partners equal to probably roughly fifty percent of your budget, correct? Additional. On top of them, the expansion here, I think, I would just like to request as someone in the SMID, as a citizen, that before you guys approve this, you look at a more concrete plan for what's going to be done with the additional one hundred and twenty-five thousand, which I think you received once the Hard Rock started paying in, give or take, give or roughly.
I can show you some street.
Okay, but, and going forward, because there's an expansion, I think there's a great need as downtowns migrate away from retail massively towards cultural entertainment to do things that can draw people and make downtowns a better place overall for people to attend events and come down to do different things. But I think it's enough money at this point that it also needs to have some concrete teeth behind it. At one point, there was discussion early on about setting up some kind of entertainment fund. I know that at one point Downtown Partners did sponsor one event at the Tyson Center, that projects like the Roger Brooks Project, I agree with the mayor as well, having sat through that meeting and thought, thinking that that presentation was relatively spot-on, albeit very uncomfortable on a lot of points. I've been very discouraged on many fronts, Downtown Partners being one, even the city and the chamber as well, not to, and ourselves, in the lack of complete act, total inaction on that Roger Brooks proposal over the last five years. And those are the perfect things that an extra hundred, one hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars down the road can go to benefit. So I think continuing to expand this makes sense, as long as there's a real concrete plan to spend that extra money and do it for things that really further the development of downtown businesses and their businesses and everything else, and none of that's a surprise, so I don't want you to think the wrong way. And I am generally a fan of what you guys were doing, and as that continues to grow, I think, and you guys sitting on the board, it'd be great to see concrete developments and concrete expenditures and taking on projects as opposed to, you know, undefined expenses, because it's, I mean, you could draw the whole city into it if you wanted to, but it's just more tax in the end, so.
So Dave, you probably would want Downtown Partners to include what they have then, and compile.
I mean, I'm aware Reagan's been very, very.
Projects, no, but I mean for everyone to see, for all citizens to see the projects that have been accomplished.
I would say that yes, and I've looked at that, Reagan's been very forthcoming. I think a lot, some of the ones on the list, Downtown Partners has been party to, or they've been, they have been events in downtown that, you know, in some cases, maybe Downtown Partners wasn't really the catalyst on them, but maybe was supportive. And I think that's different when you maybe have some staff time or put a thousand dollars towards something than it is saying, hey, we're going to spend fifty thousand dollars on signage, we're going to sponsor four concerts at the Tyson Center every year at twenty-five thousand dollars apiece, or we're going to do, you know, lighting under the bridges for fifty thousand dollars. I mean, I saw the list, Reagan shared the list, budgets and everything, but a lot, to your own admission, a lot of the items on the list were events that occurred and things that occurred in downtown, in the SMID, not necessarily initiatives of Downtown Partners. So you guys would know, sitting on that board, better than any of us, or Reagan as well. But I think that that's important to know before passing something like this for another five years, greatly expanding it, and it's also already been expanded greatly by the addition of the Hard Rock in the SMID, just almost by default, so.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Terry.
Anyone else? Sure should probably put that Security Bank and Williams &amp; Company and those guys in. We're now, we're trying to be offices, and now we don't have those buildings in, makes no sense to me, but.
Where is it?
Who's in there?
Security.
Your drive-up? They just told me.
That's ninth.
That's ninth.
Yeah, should put you in there.
He wants you in there.
Moving on up there, Bob.
I'm saying we should move a lot of that that's over there, up there, that's not in it. Why, why do some get out and some get in? I'm saying we should move a lot of that that's over there, up there, that's not in it. Why, why do some get out and some get in? I mean, what's the difference of the Insurance Exchange Building's in and Williams and Company's building that's basically the same as out? It makes no sense to me. But... I would have gone where there were actually tax revenue, but...
Who makes the decision on the SMID itself?
The boundary is discussed by our board for a couple of months prior to going out to, to vote. So we've talked to city staff, we look at topography, we look at a lot of different things on businesses that are in it or properties that are in those areas that could benefit. Once you, once you do start going north, it does get a little more difficult to, I'd say, sometimes discuss the value of what that entails. A lot of things happen along, you know, even the 4th Street corridor strip pedestrians. Once you get up north farther, it just gets a little bit more difficult to, you know, how far up do you move planters? At what point do you stop the wayfinding signing? There's, there has to be a boundary at some point, and this is the cleanest cut that we had discussed.
And where's the concentration of those businesses?
It's the density.
How far are you gonna continue to reach to try to include or be as inclusive as possible?
We're already so spread out in downtown, it's, yeah.
This may be the dumbest question I've ever asked, but I'm gonna ask it anyway.
We'll be the judge of that.
Just for me, yeah. I feel so, I'm honored, please.
In the SMID, right? If we did, okay, so how are you gonna get money back out of that except that people will go downtown? Because don't you go by taxes?
Right, your, our budget is taxes.
Have to pay taxes to the SMID then?
No, you are tax exempt. But it is our budget that helps support the businesses that connect to the riverfront, and it is, it's all or nothing. It's an umbrella.
So the SMID is gonna help us put stuff into the riverfront?
We are going to definitely help attract to that riverfront. We want everybody enjoying downtown, and a riverfront is part of that.
That's our story.
Can I get that down and writing?
Being how you perform to me.
Yeah.
Listen, it's hard to vote for this today, as much as I want to support you, when you haven't had signage done in five years. We talked about this on your last renewal, guys. This is not something new. So it's difficult, and now you want to expand and say, well, we're gonna do more things. Well, let's don't sit on money, let's do things. But first of all, the city attorney's making us vote on this first.
We need to vote to officially open the hearing.
To open the hearing is what we vote, yeah.
Okay, well, that's easy.
I do one more public comment.
Whoops.
But then I thought there was a...
The attorney's got it under control.
I just voted.
We have to vote, and the motion to amend will be later, but you gotta open the hearing. She's right.
Yes.
You're open. They gotta open it first.
It's open now.
Correct.
Well...
She gotta put it out.
It's open, 5-0. Go ahead.
Okay, hi, Dennis Johnson with HoChuck. I think I know most of you. Just a couple of quick things, just to reiterate. First of all, just for full disclosure, I am part of Downtown Partners as far as president. I think I really want to say a couple of things more so from the property owner perspective, though, from HoChuck, Inc. We're obviously a fairly decent-sized property owner, and we look at Downtown Partners as just, just a great opportunity to kind of raise the tide of all of downtown. So I think when you look at the map and things like that, a couple of things from the downtown perspective, we didn't look at a sheer, like, tax grab. So when we were setting our boundaries, you know, we definitely looked at it from the perspective of what made sense from a service area. And part of our challenge is, we've got one of the larger downtowns of Iowa in respect, it's what, 54 blocks or something like that? So it's a massive area to, to kind of service. So we didn't want to overreach necessarily for tax dollars, but obviously want to be good stewards of tax dollars as well, too. So we felt like part of the riverfront moving forward will be a key thing. And, you know, I think from the HoChuck, Inc. perspective, we wanted to be part of it, so I asked to even a couple of our buildings to be included because I look at, just being part of the Downtown Partners, is doing some pretty big things moving forward. I know there's some, maybe some comments here regarding the last five years and things. I've been part of for maybe about three, and that's, I think, about the same time period that Roger Brooks came to town and things like that. So like somebody said, I think a lot of critical comments that were probably accurate for our city that we need to address. So we have definitely, from the Downtown Partners plans, taken those things pretty seriously. And a couple of the big initiatives that we're gonna kind of move from, that'll take some of the dollars that are coming in and will be more into capital improvement-type things, would be with the wayfinding. So we have taken kind of a lead role in moving that forward, and Reagan can maybe add a couple of points to that, too. But the wayfinding is a big thing that, over the next few years, we're gonna take a lot of the resources coming in and invest in that. Just to be honest with you, it's not gonna probably be every penny of it, too, because it's not like we have just a huge, you know, pot of gold sitting there just ready to do something with. But I think we can, if we plan right, over the next few years, take some of those resources and have a bigger effect than what we maybe have had in the past, and I think that's fair criticism to receive as well. We looked, I guess, even probably two or three years ago, and wanted to move past, like, just being the entity that puts planters in front of buildings, right? We decided we needed to strategically look at what is the biggest impact that we could have to downtown. That wasn't like perennials that are here and next year we have to recharge everything. And we felt like the wayfinding, as well as pushing forward, enhance downtown lighting to, for a couple of different aspects. I think there's a safety issue that will help and give a comfort level to visitors downtown. Obviously, looking forward to the next couple of years, there'll be a lot more visitors with the riverfront, you know, going back and forth downtown on the riverfront. So I think enhancing lighting is gonna be a key thing. So we, is increasing lighting from Historic 4th Street to Hard Rock, Hard Rock to Pearl Street is kind of our first phase over the next year or two. So that's gonna be kind of a large capital spend that we have planned on. And I think we are, Reagan, you want to add to where we're at as far as the lighting and the wayfinding projects? Because in my mind, that is taking a lot of the, the resources in the next few years really into some projects that I think you'll see are a lot more tangible than maybe events that are great, too, but they're, they're, you know, after the event's done, you don't see anything else. So I think emphasizing that, Reagan is probably pretty critical, if you want to just reiterate where we're at on that.
Sure, I can take a quick minute. For wayfinding, we are in the final design phases. We are finishing up. This will be the final, I think 30 to 45 days is when the final report for design comes out. That will show us where to put signs, what their design is, what's on those signs, and we're going through all of that before we can go through bid and installation. So we have gotten to the point, courtesy of, obviously, a lot of Downtown Partners funds, but also contributions from the city and the chamber. We are finishing that up. We will get to bid and installation here with Jeff, once those documents are complete and ready for bid. So that's gonna be, like I said, in the next 30 to 45 days, so that's coming up very shortly. Finally, courtesy of Mr. Bernstein's idea, festoon lighting along Historic 4th Street. That's something we have bids for, instead of just doing a portion of it, which we can, we are going to fund the entire block, if we can get that done, the entire two-block section, I should say, of Historic 4th. And then we are looking at some demo lights that will lighten, not necessarily the globes we have downtown, kind of take the light upwards. When you're walking down the path, down the path in the street to get from Pearl to 4th, it'll kind of take it downwards. So you've got a little bit different of a foot lighting type scenario that kind of visually shows you the walking path throughout downtown and makes it look safer and make it more, more vibrant. The other thing included in that, I want to point out, is also the skywalks, utilizing what's underneath those skywalks. I know, Alex, you mentioned it once, they're painted brown. Could there be a different colored paint we're using for that? We'd like to light it. We'd like to, if we can safely, light underneath those skywalks and maybe someday inside those skywalks. So from the interstate, you can see color in the skywalks. It looks vibrant, and you want to pull over and come in. So that, and then the final, I guess, big picture stage is to light the underpasses under the interstate. They will be very well lit, but we want to do something cool with that that attracts people to the riverfront from downtown. So those are the two major ones.
Great, thank you, Reagan. So I think really, those are gonna take a lot, a lot of money. And honestly, it's not gonna be just the tax revenue from the SMID, probably won't be enough. We'll try to be creative, hopefully, maybe there's grant opportunities and things like that. But I just want to reiterate some of the input as far as not doing anything. I guess if you look back five or 10 years, I think it's probably fair, and we've really strategically looked at, what can we do that'll have a long-term systemic change to downtown? From a visitor standpoint, creating more activity and really increasing just the, the whole downtown environment. Because I think, again, I think hopefully we can get, make ourselves a lot more competitive against cities around us, Sioux Falls, Des Moines, Omaha, that have got active, vibrant downtowns, and it really strengthens our community. So hopefully, over the course of the next five or 10 years, we can kind of look and make, make ourselves something like that, too. So from the HoChuck, Inc. perspective, I just want to say I would, you know, support including the riverfront as well, and we just look at that as a critical element. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Now we have to vote on the amendment.
Well, one thing I would just say or ask is to, I mean, it sounds like there are some concerns as far as, the mayor's concerns as far as timing with the wayfinding. I think we all understand that and all feel that. And to Mr. Bernstein's point, I understand him wanting to see tangible outcomes, you know, physical, tangible. I can feel this, I can see what's happening, and it sounds like you listed some of those as well. Is there any benefit to, to putting forth a plan of this is what we want to do over the next year and the timeline of kind of outlining that for the property owners or for people to say, this is, these are the plans that we're putting forth, this is what they look like in the timeline and the dollars committed?
Sure.
For that, is that possible?
Yeah, that's not, that's absolutely doable. Since our last strategic plan, we do that on a monthly basis. I mean, there are, there's 100 community members outside of our Board of Directors that meet on a monthly basis in different ways for downtown, with residents, with our community groups and things like that. So there are so many people at the table doing exactly what you want to see. Putting it into a timeline is just management of it. I can put that into a timeline for our next update. But having that, those items that you want to, and a little bit more easy to, to understand, so we can do that.
Sounds like our council representatives just haven't been letting us know all this stuff you're doing. I think it's kind of...
Well, and I think it is important to update everyone, you know what I mean, to keep, especially with the wayfinding and things like that. Because if they don't know where we're at on it, they're just saying, well, I don't see it.
Yeah, and you saw it at the joint meeting, to be fair.
When are, when are you due for your next council presentation?
Council presentation will be third week in July.
Third week in July?
Yep, and we go every quarter. And then we meet with you jointly, usually in the spring. So we come to council quarterly update. Our next quarterly update, there'll be a lot, a lot more.
That'd be a good format.
Yeah, it'll be a good format for that one.
Okay, so we don't vote on the amendment now, Nicole's gonna tell us how we do it.
Okay. The next, the next action...
We have two motions on the floor. As long as you know, yes, we do. We have two motions and two seconds.
I understand that. Let her explain so you know what you have to withdraw. That's all I'm saying.
The motion for the amendment made by Councilman Waters and seconded by Councilman Moore related to the amendment. My proposal for the council's consideration would be the main item, the number 23 is a motion to close the hearing and direction to staff to prepare the ordinance. Staff would need direction as to whether or not the riverfront area would be included or not included. That could be done in one vote if you choose to do that. However, you would need to withdraw the pending motion. And second, that's currently on the floor.
Yeah, so you have to withdraw that, then you can remake the motion on 23, and, and then say you direct staff to include the riverfront.
What's item 22?
That just set the hearing.
That opened the hearing.
Yeah.
That's all that did.
Yep.
I'm perfectly okay withdrawing my second.
And he'd have to withdraw his first.
I will withdraw my motion.
Okay, now you can make a motion on 23.
Did we vote on 22 already?
Correct.
So someone make a motion to close the hearing and direct staff to prepare the ordinance for the hearing.
If we can have that timeline to make sure the council has that, as well as property owners in the future, I think that would just be important to have that ironed out.
I make a motion to close the hearing.
For the quarterly updates, I'm sorry, is that what you're talking about?
Whether it's in the updates, if we want to do it quarterly or something, just presenting. And I know you've done it in joint meetings, but obviously, property owners have some of those same concerns.
Yeah, and we are going to be doing biannual reports as well. That'll start this fall, so that'll help. They'll be mailed directly.
Obviously, every five years, they're gonna want updates, a lot more about what tangible things have been put in place. And so if we're talking in all abstract terms, even right now, I mean, Mr. Johnson even brought forth some ideas of where we've come in the past. I think that we just need to have those, those firm details moving forward.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and a direct staff to prepare the ordinance for the renewal of the Main Street Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District, including the riverfront area. How's that?
That was very authoritative.
Exactly.
We almost had to read it.
So we're basically vote for the riverfront.
Closing the hearing.
It's inclusion.
Yeah.
And we'll be back in 30 days. Right, we'll be back in...
Correct, the ordinance comes back on June 11th.
That's all.
And you won't include the riverfront this year because Mr. Gill won't put it in until next year, right?
Then...
Right, right. Yeah, we're a year off when it comes to...
Reagan, would it be possible in that 30-day...
It goes in the boundary, but it's not taxed, because this is additional areas to the boundary, so it's a year off. So it'll be in the boundary.
Reagan, my question, would it be possible in that 30 days when it comes back to, I forget, I think we have another meeting maybe coming up, to have some of that outlined so that you can present that of kind of the timeline of what those dollars are gonna go towards? Because I think some of them, like the festoon lighting and the wayfinding and knowing that timeline and presenting it to council so that we can hold, or so that council can hold our group accountable as well and say, yes, we are seeing those steps being taken.
You bet.
Would that be possible? So in the 30 days, we have that.
Plenty of time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll have it next week.
Yeah, not if you're in charge. Okay.
Close your...
All right.
Aye.
Caperen?
Aye.
Redkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. 24 is a hearing and resolution approving proposal to grant a temporary easement property at 70127th Street. Petitioners, Benjamin and Michelle Martin. I'll move it.
Second.
Well, you have doubts it's gonna pass? You're on the edge of your... Pass is 5-0.
On the edge of your seat.
25 is a hearing resolution approving the sale of property authorizing a city deed property at 82130th Street, 2934 Jones Street, a part of a vacated 30th Street between Jones and Jennings. The petitioners, the Sioux City Community School District. Do we have a motion?
I'll make motion.
Second.
I'll have a light.
You don't?
Call it.
I don't have a light.
Redkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Stane?
Scott?
No.
Waters?
Aye.
Caperen?
Aye.
26 is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specifications for the Big Sioux River Trail Phase 1 project. I'll move it. Second.
Hold on just a minute, let me get there.
Take that off, that off.
Okay, you may move. Oh, I got a light.
It just, the light just came on.
Did it?
Yeah, just now.
Can you push it?
Well, I will, but you were pointing to me when it was dark. You can't vote when it's not on, I...
I'm sorry.
It's there now, there again.
It's old software and it doesn't work right anymore.
I move, we update our software.
You already, you already did that for about $200,000.
We don't want to wait five years for...
It's passed as 5-0. It's coming at the same time Downtown Partners does something. 27 is a hearing of managers' report on demolition and the resolution declaring a structure to be dangerous or dilapidated and authorizing the city manager to carry out the order to demolish property at 2221 Boise Street owners Bert T. Shower.
Daryl Ball, Code Enforcement Manager. This property was placated due to fire at 2221 Boise on June 19th of last year. The property has sold since the, since the fire. The current order is here to speak on his behalf on the property at this time. Staff has in the RCA to order for demolition. The property owner will come forward and speak on his plans.
I'd like to request the council to give me a 90-day timeline extension.
Name and address.
Pardon?
Name and address, please.
I'm Bert Shower. I'm, I'm from Mapleton, Iowa. If I can get the council to give me the 90-day extension to either renovate the property. I sat and visited with Daryl this morning, and he gave me a few other ideas on that property as far as demolishing it and bringing in a manufactured home, or talking to Habitat for Humanities, and I went down and visited with them and after demolition, donating the property to them. But in order for me to figure out what we want, what I want to do, I'd like to have that 90-day window, if I can, to be either to renovate it or one of the other two options.
So what, explain to what's going on there, Daryl, because this had a fire.
Yes.
Nothing happened. Now this gentleman bought it?
Yeah, it was shortly after the fire that, that it was purchased. Danny Robinson was the owner at the time of the fire, and he sold the property, and then we've given time to, to get the repairs underway. He's been in the, Bert has been in the office before, asking the direction of what we needed to do. We needed drawings on how the new structure was gonna be built, because there's a lot of damage to the roof structure on this property as well as the walls, which means building to, you know, to the compliance as far as the structure's concerned. So since that time, the new repairs have not been made, and we brought it forward to council for demolition because of that, since the reports have not been made. It's when that notice went out, the office, and we talked about what he could do there. His biggest concern is with the zoning requirements, you cannot have a accessory structure without a primary structure, which means the garage is gonna come down, which kind of reduces the value of what's left for there for the property at this time. That's why some of the other conversations as far as other alternatives, rebuilding a structure, maybe selling it to an adjacent property... a structure, maybe selling it to an adjacent property owner, making a donation to somebody else that's gonna build on it, that they could still save that, save that garage that's there. And when, where are you from?
I'm from Mapleton. I've done two other houses like this that were burn units that we went in and completely gutted them, completely recited them, new wiring, new plumbing, new everything. One of them was for my mother-in-law, which lives on 1300 South Ellis. That house was assessed at, that property was assessed at a little over $32,000 prior to the fire, and after the fire now it's assessed at $95,000. So I mean, it isn't, it isn't just a thrown-together project.
How long have you owned the house?
Pardon?
How long have you owned it?
Which one?
This one.
The one we're talking about now?
Mm-hmm.
Since July.
July 5th.
How come you haven't done anything in almost nine months?
Well, I've got a three-man crew. Last fall, when we were looking at getting into it, one of my guys broke his leg. That kind of threw a wrench into everything. This spring, a month ago, I had a new knee put in. That kind of threw another wrench into things, but we've got things in order now to get on it and get going on it. I've got six guys lined up to work on it.
Do you need all 90 days, then?
I would say yeah.
Daryl?
During the conversation, we discussed the requirements that would be, that would be necessary for a 90-day stay of demolition, which included the $10,000 bond cashier check, as well as the other documentation that would go along with it. I know we do have some neighbors that have called into the office as well, and I believe they're here tonight to speak on the project as well, but there's a lot of damage there. He's been through some of these before, so that, you know, as far as understanding the undertaking, I believe he understands fully what the undertaking is. I'm not sure, you know, he's here to ask if he really knows for sure right now what his direction would be with that. I think there's a lot of choices he's trying to, would like to discuss.
Did you say you got a $10,000?
We would ask for that. Yeah, right now, the staff came in with the recommendation for demolition, so we would ask for that if you were to grant that.
Okay, unless you've got something else to say, we'll let the neighbors have a say.
Okay.
Vaughn O'Callahan, 814 Goldie Avenue. I've lived across the alley from this property for the last 27 years. When Danny Robinson owned it, it was in very poor condition. You can look at the tax records. It was purchased, as he indicated, on July 5th. He didn't mow, he hasn't shoveled. He's been there maybe a couple of times, filling a couple of dumpsters, and I would like to say that at some point, we need to get rid of this eyesore and this dangerous property, which is right close to the elementary school. I know that the code people know that I've called, because the, the place wasn't even boarded up, it's a half a block away from the elementary school. So we have little kids walking by it every day. There were boards with nails laying open, the doors and windows were open. I don't know if the city actually went out and boarded it up, or if he finally got there, but there's been no effort whatsoever. I feel like we should at least take care, take consideration to the citizens who are residents and live in the neighborhood and take care of our property versus someone who wants to make a quick buck, who doesn't live here, who hasn't mowed, who hasn't taken care of the property, and 10 months and two days later, now today, he's out there trying to make effort to get something done so that it doesn't get demolished. I feel like this property has had ample opportunity to get taken care of, and it hasn't, and it needs demolished at this time. And I've got a lot of people who've come around here as well, because we're concerned about how dangerous it is. I personally watch possums and wild cats running in and out of the garage. Although the garage is detached and did not burn, it's very dilapidated as well, and I'm truly concerned about little kids walking back and forth by this, because he went there today, does that mean he's gonna finish it? I've seen many, many people do things like this, where they only start working on a property once it's up for demolition, and not until. He doesn't live in the neighborhood, nor does he have to look at it every day. I have pictures, if you'd like to see what some of our neighbors look at every single day, every day. It's, it's just not a beautiful thing. I have front and back. I'm done with this property.
Thank you.
I can share with her.
I have plenty.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's what we're going into right now.
That's okay, I got it now.
So Daryl, with all, like, the yard not being mowed, snow not being moved, how many assessments have been made against the property to get the-
A lot, I just bring it up to see what I could get.
I believe there's three right now.
Daryl, I want to hear from Daryl.
Yeah, that's why I was bringing up the case here, so we have some photos of the fire as well, and then I can give you some definite details of the rest of that.
Is that the homework?
Okay, so he wants to go in and fix this house up, is that what you want to do?
I must have missed it. No, but I want to just know about the, when you mentioned the yard and-
You have any other questions for me?
Thank you, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anything.
No, I don't see it either.
You raised a good point, I'm just asking staff for a question on how many assessments have been made.
I think there's one.
I see two.
It was on mowing.
One on mowing?
Yeah. Since I owned it, if there was any one Danny Robinson owned it before that, I don't know.
Was this a duplex?
No, it's a single family.
I did want to make comment that it's listed on the tax site.
Just a minute, you gotta come to the mic, though. I'm not saying you can't talk, but you gotta come to the mic so she can record. You can come to that mic, it records.
I just want to reference that it's been listed on the tax site as owner occupied. I know that makes a difference with taxes. This house has been a rental house for decades. You know, I know when Danny Robinson owned it, he would rent to own kind of a deal and then pull it back, but I just feel like we too should be making sure that these rental properties that aren't being taken care of, or even if they are, are listed correctly on the tax site.
You're saying Danny might have not paid a permit on it?
I'm fairly certain, I'm fairly certain.
Oh my God, Bob!
That shocks us as council members. Isn't this the one he did go in and out of and live in a little bit?
No, he didn't live in this one, he lives down on Goldie a little further. He just drives by this one every day, twice a day, still does, even though he sold it, so.
We've had, in this 2017 area, since the red tag, we've had two weed violations and snow violation. Some of them were taken care of prior to the city involvement. One of them was done by the city as well, so. We've also had building complaint, environmental complaint that were addressed, two environmental complaints that were addressed as well.
I don't know what the council's gonna want to do, but how serious are you? Because this really looks like a train wreck to me.
I, I wouldn't have bought it if I wasn't serious, okay?
Well, I understand that, but-
And the council can do what they want. I mean, it's up to you, if you want an empty lot where you get minimal taxes-
Listen, you buy these properties, you gotta fix them up, it's Sioux City.
Pardon?
This is Sioux City, and, and we've been very patient after nine months, okay? We have. And so if I make a motion, it's probably not gonna be what you want to hear, but, but I want action on this. You don't buy houses and then sit on them in this condition for 90 days, and, or for nine months, to me. So I'll move a $15,000 bond, 60 days, and $100 penalty for every day over the 60 days. Now, I might be agreeable to changing that if you really make a lot of progress in the next 60 days. You know, this council has proven time and time again, they'll work with you, but we're gonna, I want to see action in the next 60 days.
I'll second that.
As Daryl explained to me this morning, he didn't think I could get it done in 90.
With, with the severity- You know what? Go to work on that house in the next 60 days and come back here, and we're probably gonna be sympathetic, but if we go 60 days and there's nothing done, guess what? It's coming down. We can't allow this to go all summer and not have some meaningful work done on it. That's not fair to the people that are sitting out here, that wonder if their kids and their grandkids are gonna get in that house, that's not fair.
I think there was one time that my guys left the board. I understand that, okay? I was never left sitting that way for months, or weeks, or days.
Well, unfortunately, you bought into a situation that you had nothing to do with, but Danny's-
I understand, I never knew Danny before this.
Danny's not been a good neighbor to this neighborhood, and it's time these neighbors see some action on the house, that's all I'm saying.
In 60 days, if they come in and say, I don't think that's good enough, make it come down.
You get the outside cleaned up and things like that-
And I've stuck $40,000 into it.
You put $40,000 in that house in the next 60 days, I don't really think the council's gonna care necessarily what the neighbors think, as long as it looks like you put $40,000.
And besides, there's gonna be inspectors out there, and I'll guarantee that I will be out there.
Okay.
Daryl, when did the city board that up, that house? Do you know?
I don't know exactly, I have to go in here and look. It's-
But, but I'm just saying, go to work on the house, and I don't think the neighbors are gonna complain, I think they want to see action, I gather that, but-
Okay, I do have a question, okay? I own property around town, okay? Sixth Avenue, across the alley from one of my structures, stood a house that was red tagged. Was red tagged for three and a half years. Nothing ever happened. All of a sudden, someone came-
There's a difference between fire jobs and red tags, there's a big difference.
This was a red tag.
But we're not talking about that house, we're talking about your house today.
I, but I'm, I want to understand the code. If the code is six months on a red tag, then it's six months on a red tag. This house sat for three to three and a half years, all of a sudden, someone come along and bought it and fixed it up, and now they turned around and sold it for 170-some thousand.
You understand on a fire job-
Which I understand is great for the city.
You understand on a fire job, we can red tag it and tear it down with a hearing, can we not, if it's that dangerous and dilapidated?
If it's imminent danger, we can move forward right away.
That's right, and this house is, is definitely imminent danger, we have that right, we're being very sympathetic to you, in my opinion, and you've got to make a decision, a business decision, whether you want to fix the house up or not, but it's not, we're not asking you to do anything that's not unreasonable, in my opinion. I mean, I can get a lot of work done in 60 days with two or three guys, and you can too. You know, if you got the outside looking good, the neighbors aren't gonna care much about the inside, they want to see some action on that outside and make it look like it belongs in the neighborhood, and you won't have to worry about it.
And safety.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm not sure you can, structurally, I mean, have you gone, you gonna be able to save the house structurally, Daryl?
The upper portion of it, there's not. You're at, the roof system, the build out of the living space in the attic, it's gotta, it's gonna have to be completely rebuilt.
But you can do a lot of that in the short timeframe if you get after it. Go ahead.
I'm Denise Scott, I work at Come and Go on Riverside Boulevard, I'm not really a resident, but there are a lot of sporting activities that also happen on that field that's kitty-corner from there. You know, we have teams from out of town come in. It's not only unsightly, but as we've said, it's unsafe. Kids are gonna be climbing on it and trying to get in, you know, we don't need it. We don't need the critters, we don't need the hassle of it being unsafe.
There's a chain-link fence around it.
Only on the front.
Guys, when we do these hearings, they're not ever pleasant, so let's do the mic so that, okay, just so we know. Anyway, that's the, my motion, is there a second?
I did, I seconded.
Well, I just want the neighbors to understand, I think we all want to be proactive, we don't want you to have to put up with this any longer, I think, I hope that you understand that, but we also want to give the benefit of the doubt, fine, let's see action in the next 60 days, and if you don't, fine, we're tearing it down.
Brett Wheelock, 2213 Boise Street. I, this last winter, we had plenty of snow here in Sioux City. Traditionally, I try to take a skid loader, snow blower, whatever I can. Down the sidewalk, we have elderly people along that street as well, and I try to help the neighbors out and such, but after enough times of going by that house and cleaning off the sidewalk for them, they never get to it. I finally said, you know what, I'm done with that one, so I'd skip it and go on to the next neighbor. But that's not my biggest concern, because I'm a general contractor by trade, and I can tell you right now, Bobby, you're right on the money. That, and this is his business, he can put whatever money he wants into this place, but I can tell you, as a general contractor, the damage is so severe on that place that I cannot feasibly see any reasonable amount of money that's gonna be going into this place to generate a property that's gonna be a property that's gonna pass inspections and be feasible for anyone to buy and to habitate in. The roof is bound to the floor joists, to the basement, I'm surprised there's not gonna be a mold problem very, very soon with all the, all the heat and so on and so forth, but again, that's, it's gonna be his issue, but my, my dilemma here is, and I've watched city council meetings numerous times, where the city goes in and red tags a property, and you give notification to the owners of that property that you have such and such timeframe to get something done. How many times do we need to continue to have issues come about where there's nothing being done until a day or two, then they get a notice?
I could tell you what, we're getting a lot better at that.
Yeah, this has not been before us before, has it?
Yeah, no.
No, I'm, I'm not saying this property in general, but I'm just saying in general-
You need to watch his council, because we're, we-
We don't put up with it.
We don't put up with it.
Well, I mean, I've watched a few others out in Riverside that, you know, needed, tore down, and then the owners come and say, you know what, give me some more time, and then, you know, and it's, it's one of those things that I wish the city would actually adopt something that says you got six months, here's your guideline, progress needs to be checked every month, or whatever.
We have those guidelines, the problem is that they don't want to follow our, our guidelines. And the other side of it is, you know who's responsible for that, for that tear down, if they don't have the money? We are.
I understand.
We have to pay, which means the taxpayers have to pay. So you know, we, we try to do a balancing, you know, balancing act here, you know, trying to do, do everything right, but we also have some of these people around town that we know who they are, and we know they're MO. We know what's gonna happen, so you know, it's-
It, it's one of those things, though, that if you got a hazard to the neighborhood, you know, one of those things where if you have to tear it down because these people aren't gonna do it, you can give this guy 60 days, and in 60 days, we'll probably be back here, based on the track record. And, and it's one of those things, he just got done telling you about a red-tagged property that three and a half years later, they finally got done, so-
Well, here's the deal, he's gotta put up a $15,000 bond.
A, a bond, as far as I understand, I can pay $100 to the city and get a $10,000-
It's a $15,000 cash bond. Yeah, cash bond will tear down the house.
You can get a bond, but if you do, you're gonna post cash to get the bond-
Okay.
-from a bonding company.
So that's our, that's our, one of our sorting guarantees, that he's gonna do something. If he doesn't do anything in 60 days, or if he only puts in $10,000, this is a lot of money I get, but he's not doing what he promised us. And we have the leverage, he doesn't, because if he doesn't want to do what he was told or asked of-
Well, if we're back to square-
We'll tear it down.
If we're back to square one in 60 days, the city has to pay for the tearing of it down.
No.
No.
No, we've got $15,000 of his money in our account.
Okay, so then that'll help offset if it costs more or such.
That's real incentive.
But even if there's anything above and beyond that, or any future ones that don't have the bonds to put up, and the city has to tear them down-
Yes.
Then I'm assuming the city then will assess that, that cost to that property.
The city does more than that, the city will actually go, just so, if we have to go after this and he doesn't post a bond, if he decides tomorrow that we're gonna tear the property down, and he decides to allow us that that's the option he wants, and he doesn't elect to tear it down, then the city has now, in the last four or five years, actually gone after that homeowner personally and, and litigated that.
And, and that's, that's what you should do, I mean, I understand your concern of And, and that's, that's what you should do. I mean, I understand your concern of the city having to pay to tear these things down. But again, so much time goes by and it, it should be outlined, this is how much time you got. If not, we don't want to, we don't want to see you in front of us with any excuses. You either get it done or don't buy the property.
Believe me.
You're sending the wrong message out to people who are trying to flip out in that regard.
Our list of them, Rhonda and I got on the council seven years ago. Of red tagged houses till now is a lot shorter list.
It is, to the point where we're no longer.
Lot of houses.
Right now, we're not even having red tags.
Rhonda used to have sympathy for guys like Danny and that, but.
Bought two months worth of it. And then I quit.
And sympathy ended real quick for her.
But again, he, Danny, Danny sold it to this guy, which starts a different time clock. And so I felt started. It didn't change when the other one, okay.
No.
I had my, thank you.
All right, thank you.
When did that start, Daryl?
Excuse me?
Fire.
When was it red tagged?
July.
Uh, June nineteenth of twenty seventeen.
I just had one more comment I wanted to make. If they're going to, if the, you know, you're going to give him sixty days to get the property in order and he's talking about the fact that the front has a chain link fence. The back is totally open. Kids walk back and forth and up and down day when those people leave there.
I, I agree. And, and Alex brought it up first about our, our interest in making sure that the property is safe and secure. And so I, I agree with what the conditions the mayor has, uh, shared with us. But I would also ask that we have a stipulation that the property be, uh, completely se- safe and secure so nobody can access it. Last thing we want is a child walking down the street and be, uh, you know, inquiring minds want to know what's inside. And if they go inside and somebody gets hurt, I don't want that to happen. I want to make sure that you've got it secure, that nobody gets in and out unless it's you or your workers.
So how would you like that to be a comment?
I was going to say that's.
Well, I don't know. You got to tell me.
Four foot chain link fence.
Well, uh, I tell you what we did at Sixteenth and Grand View. We had a six foot chain link fence all the way around the building. Big apartment house.
And before any of this can happen, we need a fifteen thousand dollar bond, correct?
Chain link fences too.
We may be ordering over nothing here.
Pardon?
Generally, it's a ten day time period from the date of the council action in order to have the property owner procure the bond, sign the agreement with the city and produce it to us.
I think if you have to put.
Securing the property is Daryl's job. I mean, that is your job.
Yeah.
To make sure he, so he can define what that definition is, like.
Well, I would assume we would, uh, uh, board up the doors, the windows.
Right, right. I'm just saying, Daryl's people can monitor that.
Okay.
I'm curious, what, what, what did you estimate the cost to be to remodel the house and bring it up to code?
Probably around fifty to sixty, somewhere in there.
Fifty to sixty thousand total.
And the properties around there, I mean, and I'm not, not tearing apart anybody's properties, but when that property is done, it'll upstand quite a few of them around there, okay?
Well, I hope so.
And a lot of, and a lot of the properties around there are valued at a hundred and ten, a hundred and thirty.
Okay.
Well, time will tell.
Motion on the floor. Anyone else be heard? Call the roll or how we voted.
I'll call the roll.
Okay.
And you want the property secured? State the languages you would like in the amendment.
On the secu- on the securing, Daryl's already does that. I mean, that's his job.
That's not part of your.
No, no, yep.
Kayford?
Well, what's the timeline of that happening?
Sixty days.
No, 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 of the securing.
He's got ten days to do all this to get with Daryl and get everything done to start that. I mean, he can start before ten days, but he's got ten days to do it.
The pay is fifteen.
And to get.
Well, we won't.
To secure the property.
Will we wait ten days before we go out and secure it, the property?
That shouldn't be, he can do that any day.
Okay, that's.
Okay.
That would be my concern.
On the fifteen thousand, what, what you?
As well as neighbors.
Yes.
Call the roll.
Kayford?
Hi.
Gretchen?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Hey, better get with Mr. Daryl real fast and get a game plan going, okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Twenty-eights, a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of Sioux City Brick and Tile Company for the purchase of land and then combine Central Sioux City CBD Urban Renewal Area and authorizing development and minimum assessment agreements. Property at two hundred and two twenty-two Floyd Boulevard and motion request to defer this item until May twenty-first, two thousand eighteen. I'll move that second.
You may use your electronic voting card.
Oh, thank you. I voted. How does this end up being? A, uh, targeted, uh, right? You picked a good meeting where you have, you have to stay to the end, don't you? To get your credits.
Hope you don't have to stand or counsel concerned, because with some of these guys, that lasts a long time.
We got a lot going on in this community. I tell you what.
You, uh, everybody voted here or you?
I, we are waiting for Cal's congressional. There we go.
He's thinking.
Chatty Cathy.
Five to zero.
My height's gone.
Twenty-nines, a resolution inviting proposals for the lease of land in the combined Central Sioux City CBD Urban Renewal Area, accepting the proposal of S C E Partners and is scheduling a hearing of the property in the vicinity of Third and Pearl Streets. I'll move it.
Second.
Want to say anything, Mr. Warner? Good to see you in town.
I was going to say blast from the past.
Been a while. It's definitely been a while. I have a short presentation. I don't know if it's queued up.
For the recording, could you state your name and, um, I'm sending you a Hard Rock?
Yeah, I'm Bill Warner with the Hard Rock.
That's for the recording and the record.
Guys, this is where it gets fun.
Trying to pace myself.
God, they could have a piece of cake if they said.
Yeah, hey, we got cake for you.
Yeah, we got cake.
Oh, we have cake tonight for you. Celebrating three birthdays. I didn't have any.
You didn't have any?
Oh, no, I must have gotten another piece.
There you go. Good.
All right.
Cause I'm not.
Yeah, and you only took half a piece, so I get your other half.
The doctor said maybe eight weeks before I drive it again.
How about if I take care of it? I wash it, wax it?
Well, thanks again. So what I have is a, a proposal for a parking structure to be built on the, uh, on the parcel. Sorry, I'm not good with technology, so I'll go a little slow. So the idea is we have a, a proposal for a parking structure that would have at least four hundred and twenty spaces. Um, it would be for joint use by the Tyson Event Center as well as the Hard Rock. I think everybody understands that there's limited parking in that downtown area. When there's events at Tyson or when we have events, uh, parking's very strained. And I think just as a general day-to-day matter, you know, we'd love to continue to grow our business. I think Tyson wants to get more active and, and generating more business. So parking seems to be one of the key solutions to, to those needs. Uh, the site would be the, uh, uh, right at the corner of Third and Pearl, which is the old Liberty Bank parcel. Right now, as, as contemplated, it would be a four level parking structure. And the project budget is approximately eleven million dollars and that cost would be shared by Hard Rock Sioux City as well as the city. So as I said, it'd be used for both, uh, events at the Hard Rock as well as Tyson Event Center. Uh, the project would be, if approved, would be a city bid project. So the, the, um, contracting would be controlled by the city. Um, the, the str- the structure would also have the opportunity to have fifteen thousand square feet of retail dining or entertainment on the first floor. That would be at the corner, just right along Pearl and along Third Street. So effectively, the idea is to, to put in some amenities that would, would be able to cater to the crowd that would come to Tyson or the, the crowd that comes to the Hard Rock, or even just the, the local downtown businesses. There's been a lot of development in that area since the Hard Rock opened. And I think there's just, now that we've got some momentum, let's continue that development and put amenities in there that makes some sense for, for everybody. Um, we would contemplate using a portion of that. And, and I think you could, you could see whether it's a dining entertainment use, a local restaurant concept, um, combined with a small casino expansion could be a good combination. But really, nothing contemplated at the moment. Um, any use would have to be approved by the city. And we would come back to, to the city with that joint project once we, uh, once we have a better sense for what we would, we would think would work.
This in the smid?
I think it was in that very large block. So the, uh, red outline is where the garage would be sited, or where the building would be sited. You can see right above it, the existing Hard Rock. Um, the most recent expansion we did is the, the small amount, or the small part of the building that kind of juts out to the right. The red outline would then be the, uh, structure and it would cross Third Street. It would effectively have a very elevated first section to allow for trucks and any other large traffic to get underneath. But would allow the garage to kind of span, um, span Third Street so that you can maximize the size of that parking garage. That's the, uh, the first floor floor plan. So the, the way the garage would be set up, unlike some of the garages you see in town and, and in a lot of cities where you have to kind of spiral around to get from level to level, it's proposed to have a, it's called a speed ramp, which allows you to get from the first floor all the way up, just in one direct ramp. So it's nice and convenient for guests. We'd anticipate it being incredibly well lit, uh, very safe, very friendly. We would make sure that, you know, from a security standpoint and a cleanliness standpoint, tighter floor plan. And this actually shows where the, uh, the retail, entertainment, dining amenities would go. There's six blocks, the blue shaded areas along kind of the top part and down to the left. There's two elevators, two stairwells, one contemplated in the top right section, which would be primarily the Tyson Events use. And then on the bottom left is our use. So a guest who parks in the garage could either go to Tyson Events through that convenient access, um, on Pearl Street, or they can come to the Hard Rock, um, by crossing over Third Street. Here's an elevation of it. And you can see the section that crosses Third Street. And it's contemplated to be designed with a kind of a mesh screen. So, so a guest, if they're walking across, anybody who drops something or wants to cause any trouble on, on Third Street would be prohibited from doing that by having that mesh screen there to prevent any, anything from falling on a car. Um, I think, you know, it kind of gives you a feel. There's, there's a large LED sign here. We'll have to determine from a budgetary standpoint whether that works or not. Um, but I think once we get to the spot where we can move this forward, we'll get bids and kind of figure out, um, the ultimate end cost. And here's the, here's an angle from, uh, effectively above our east parking area, looking down towards, uh, Third Street where you can see the, the road go underneath the garage. And then the bottom left is just a direct shot on Third Street. This is, uh, this is from the other side, uh, kind of higher up than Wes- than, you know, just Wesley Parkway, but kind of elevated from that view. And then this would be roughly, you know, if you're above the Tyson Event Center, looking back across the, uh, the tracks and the road. So happy to answer. Any questions?
Questions?
I'm impressed. It looks really nice.
My question is just, and I think you alluded or you mentioned this. Before we go through any approval of what the, the retail section or entertainment section could be used, it comes before us to talk about that. Is that correct?
That's exactly right. Yeah, it's, it would be our job to go find the proper uses or the, the uses that we think would be attractive to the city. Come back, present those, and you guys have the ability to, to then approve them.
But would you have a, a small casino in the parking lot or in there too? Like on first level or?
We could.
That's what he would.
But I think.
He would have to come forward to propose that.
And I think balancing uses, because you're going to have to look at what the rent you could get from another use versus what the casino could provide, because you guys share in the revenues of the casino and just kind of assess at that point in time what, what's the best use.
Mayor and council, when we first reached out to, uh, Hard Rock, the whole idea of commercial was to further develop the street level with more commercial. That would not only complement, uh, Hard Rock, but provide additional opportunities for people going to Tyson. Um, kind of finished the southern end of Pearl Street redevelopment and, uh, we appreciate, uh, Hard Rock's commitment to our area, but also can, to continue expanding in our area and partnering with us on things such as this. They've been a really good partner with us in the time they've been here.
Thank you.
Must be huge.
Yeah, exciting project.
Great. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much.
What, what's your anticipated construction date? I don't.
Yeah, do you have?
We started talking about this three years ago, so are we?
Right, right.
This summer, maybe?
We'd love to get going as soon as possible. Um, not as familiar with the city bid process as, as you'd have, but as soon as the project gets approved, it would begin through that process and we're, we're ready to go the minute you guys say go.
What stage are your plan development in?
Uh, I would say we're probably ninety, ninety-five percent drawn.
Okay.
Good.
We need to say start of the bidding process, uh, first of June, if we can.
You got the money for our.
We got it. We got half of it.
Like I said, we're ready to go. We, we're excited. Thank you, Bill.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Better double down on that one.
I don't know. Are we off the air?
Waiting for Cal's congressional.
He's thinking.
It mustn't be working.
He's doing a lot of thinking today.
It's working.
That's a good thing.
Five zero one, Mr. Moore.
Thank you. My math was never strong, should I guess. Thirty's an ordinance amending chapter two point three five, Events Facility Advisory Board, Events Facility Director, to reflect the change in the management of the Tyson Events Center, the Orphan Theater and the Sioux City Convention Center. First consideration passed April twenty-third, two thousand eighteen. Need a motion for second reading.
I'll move the second.
I'll second.
Mayor and council, following last, uh, meeting where this was considered, we increased the, uh, membership to nine members and added, uh, two more at large.
And I did have one question. I wa- I have contemplated this a lot. I talked to the city manager about this um, and had some questions. And I just would really be, I didn't call you individually. I probably could have. Um, I really want to make sure that we have a broad range of people from the community represented on this. And I wonder, specifically to thinking about the future growth and, and promotion of this, um, with the inclusion of, I was thinking specifically, obviously, the Sioux City Growth Organization, trying to get more young professionals involved and getting them with the promotion of the city, especially when we're looking at social media and the marketing of it. But the, the troubling or the stumbling block that I'm having is I don't want to say specifically one of those positions from the community need to be part of that organization. I don't want it to appear favoritism from other organizations. And I would just be curious.
I got that figured out.
I would just be curious what the rest of council would feel.
So we're going to put you on the board. Could you part of Sioux City Gold anyway? So that we've got two birds and one stone. There you go.
But someday I'm going to be older and perhaps.
Well, me and Pete did our stint.
Let us hope.
That's true. Dan is still.
You can never be too old for Sioux City Gold. But seriously, I think that it'll take care of itself because Sioux City Gold members will be members of these other groups will apply.
Yes.
And we'll have, as a council, we'll have that ability to balance the, the commission to make sure we have that kind of represent- representation you're talking about. That's my feeling on it.
And I did have one other question. Um, and again, I apologize that I didn't reach out to you sooner, Bob. But, um, will Ann's position, the Communications Director, will she be able to be a part of this as well or sit in? Because I think that's going to be critical coordination there as well.
She could certainly serve as a staff member.
Yeah.
You know, ideally, as we go towards more regional tourism, uh, emphasis, um, it can't be just simply the city Sioux City staff leading that effort, but she can help coordinate the city's, uh, participation in that.
Yeah, yeah. No, that'd be great. And obviously not her specifically, just that position or whatever. But I just was thinking and talking to her about that, and I think that could be really beneficial, especially early on. Obviously, the development, we'll see where it goes, but I would appreciate that input.
Okay.
Bobby, you don't have any, any other concerns?
No, I'm just going to shut up and vote today.
Okay, I, I do have a question. When are we going to start doing the, um, uh?
Recruitment?
Recruitment.
Following third reading and implementation of the ordinance.
Can we do?
You want to sign it?
Yes. Well, you'd have to make the motion.
I know, but I, I mean, I'm.
Are you voting no today? We only have to do two, because we passed it once. First consideration passed April twenty.
You don't fund it and then you add more members. That's, that's a double no vote for me. Passes four to zero, four to one, I vote no.
Well, can we, uh, pass the third?
Well, Mr. Moore, ask it not to.
I'd like to wait a week, get more public input.
We've been working on this thing for how long?
Any citizens want to be heard today? Come to the microphone and state your name and address and tell us what your, what's on your mind.
Uh, hello, my name is Johannes Swanson. I live at forty-four twelve Manor Circle Street. And for a school project, I did present, my goal is to present to city council on the ball python, the ban that we have on all constricting snakes and hopefully make an exception for the ball python. So the ball python is a snake that is native to central, central Africa. It lives in subt- it lives in tropical, bleh, tropical rainforest and savannas. Now, whenever I talk to people about, you know, the possibility of legalizing this, they bring up normally that it'll harm the environment or it will, you know, hurt people. Well, from what I've, for the fact that it lives in central Africa, cannot physically survive in this environment for over a year. And when it comes to hurting people, according to the Humane Side North America, which has had a list of python attacks for over thirty years, there has been no mention the ball pythons specifically are mentioned in that list is when, is in regards to seizures of property like in animal hoarding cases. Now, we should have some proper limits on how these should be addressed. Like, because, you know, of bad ownership and appears of that. So for example, we should encourage pet stores, places that sell these to, to tell people the proper requirements of owning these animals and properly educating them. And along, along those lines, these animals should not be allowed in public spaces. There is no reason for these animals to be out on public property where there's multiple people. They should stay in people's homes or their property.
Until they become therapeutic animals.
Point taken, but.
No, I'm just. Trust me, I've dealt with.
That wouldn't surprise me, though. It will happen eventually.
I guarantee you.
All right. So are there any questions, Ms.?
So what would you like us to do?
I don't know. So my idea was to have an exemption built in, because you have a ban on all constricting snakes. So you make an exception for this specific species.
Are there other species we should? Are there other species we should make exceptions for within the reptilian community?
Probably, but at this point, I have only done my research on this specific species of snake, and...
Do you have an extra copy of that?
I have my rough draft copy of this.
Well, why don't you get Mr. Padmore's card and email that to him so we can all look at it?
Okay, then.
Is that possible?
Sure, oh, I was supposed to give this to somebody, right?
Mr. Padmore.
Right here.
Okay, here you go, and I'll email my rough draft.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work. Great job.
We'll have the city attorney look at it as well, she thinks it already may be banned under state law, but we'll have her look.
No, we're not, I checked, there are three species of...
I tried to tell her that, but she said...
I'm afraid I don't know the difference between articulated pythons and ball pythons, so...
Anyone else to be heard, from the audience.
She's a practicing paralegal, is that right?
That's right.
I almost hesitate to go to council concerns, but go ahead.
Oh, I haven't got my list up.
Real quick, I wanted to thank Kelly Bach, who is the Parks Maintenance Field Supervisor. Kelly attended the Crescent Park Coalition Meeting with me a week before last, made a presentation on the Emerald Ash Bore, because that had come up as a topic from the meeting before. Did a great job, spent a half an hour, 45 minutes with everybody at the meeting, but I just wanted you to know Kelly was out there, and he said we'll be getting an update, council probably in the near future. I think it's been confirmed already in Buena Vista County, in Alta, so it probably, Iowa, and it probably won't be long before it gets to us. Also, well, I take that back, he said they're only supposed to go migrate two miles every three.
The Ash Bore?
Yes.
Well, they already hit it north high, that's why they cut all the trees down.
Yeah. I don't think they got to them.
That's what you were trying.
I don't think it got to them. I wanted to also share that I went to the Bridgeport West Construction Update Meeting last week, and hosted at the Chamber of Commerce by Barbara Sloniker. The update was given, they're doing, the business people seemed pretty happy with the schedule and the phases, they went through each phase. Barbara asked for a copy to be sent to the members that didn't, were not able to attend the meeting, and I asked her to send a copy to your office, to all the council members, so they could, so hopefully you'll get an update on how that progress is going, but they did mention one issue, and it's coming up Harbor Drive, and instead of circling around and waiting with everybody else when they get off work to... They're cutting through Wendy's, and apparently the police department has been out there in the past, and they think that enforcement will help. Within about a month, it'll take care of it, because they're going to block that off and start realigning that road, but if we could mention that to the PD, that would be great. And I think that's it, thank you.
Talk about the police thing that we went to Friday.
Yeah, we attended, council attended the Fallen. It was a movie that was produced by an individual who was a victim himself, and talks about our country today, and how it has impacted many people, including law enforcement, and just trying to bring awareness to the issue, and it was certainly eye-opening, it's something you read in the paper every day. It seems like almost every day something happening, and the support, you know, we all, and I know certainly the council supports public safety in our community, and believe that we have a great police department and fire department and EMS system now, and we're very thankful for that, and it really was something that tugs at the heartstrings, and hopefully we can bring enough awareness to the issue that things will get better in the long run, but it was, it was very nice. It was sponsored by the Sioux City Police Officers Association, and I think it was a local FBI agent that was the master of ceremonies, and it was just a nice social for law enforcement personnel, and then to review the film, so I don't know if it's coming to a theater near you or not, I guess, and how that will be seen, but it's probably something that would benefit everybody seeing, so, thank you.
Saturday night, I went to the courthouse dinner for their 100th anniversary, very, very nice. They gave a lot of, well, a good talk on what our 100-year courthouse has, and what it's done, and it's beautiful. I'm kind of curious what they stuck into the wall there that they got for the next 100 years.
Their time capsule?
Yeah, for their time capsule. Okay. The birthdays, today we have birthdays, you guys, three out of the five of, well, actually, we should say four, because the mayor has a birthday, Dan Moore has a birthday, Alex has a birthday, and Nicole had a birthday last week, so, you might want to stick around to get some cake.
Your tours. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday.
To all of you.
Happy birthday dear everybody.
Happy birthday to you.
And today is Dan's.
And many more.
There we go.
Yes.
And I got to tell you guys something, Dan Moore's wife made the best German chocolate cake. It was very, very good.
And for those of you who stay after...
You get a piece, and you get a piece.
And we're going to bring it out.
Mary Kay was the Oprah of cakes, so you guys got some cake coming.
Yeah, I don't think I got a piece.
I'm serious, stick around, I'm not having anymore. I'm not having, I said back there.
Pretty sure you did, Pete, but go ahead.
I'd have to get a bigger wheelchair if I have any more, so I'm not doing it.
Second youngest council member, correct?
Who?
Me.
You're the second youngest, yeah.
No, I'm not.
No, no, you're not.
You're the third. He's the sev, oh god, let's see, I'm...
65, too?
No, it's you, 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 and you.
Thank you.
Never mind.
All right, kids, moving on.
I'm done.
No, Alex, we got a lot, oh, go ahead, Dan.
I only got 17 things, so give me a second. I'm just kidding, I'm kidding. So the first one that I wanted to, first what?
What happened? Is it 6 o'clock news is on?
You gotta go talk to one of them? You guys need to steal him quick, just yet, I'll let Dan go.
We got a 7 o'clock.
All right, all right, all right. So, I just wanted to touch base about a couple things. On the 28th, I think, the mayor read a proclamation, I wasn't able to make it right away in the morning, but I went out to the Mental Health Festival, those out there, are you out there? And I was just, I was incredibly impressed, not only about the work that the students did putting that together, but also what we have happening in our community. I think that the organizations, the volunteers, the people doing that, the schoolkids that were able to coordinate that effort, I was incredibly impressed and very, very happy to see the work that people are doing, and meeting a need that I think is very much so needed in our community. The next thing I wanted to say was, is we were able to have the first event at Battery Park on the 4th, and it was a success, I was able to make the concert, and it was a great time, and I really think it is something that shows a great deal of benefit to Sioux City. I see so much investment and people coming, and we talked to people that came from out of town, or they're... Thing that I think I have is, this coming Wednesday, so the 9th, Sioux City Go will be having their general meeting, it's at the United Way Building over the noon hour, it's at 501 Steuben, or 701 Steuben Street, right there in the United Way Building, so if you're interested in joining the Young Professionals Group, you'll maybe see people like Dan Moore and myself there, so love to see you guys there. That's all I got, Mayor.
You know this Wednesday at noon, there's a joint meeting.
So I won't be there, but, and probably Councilman Moore won't either, but hey, we need everyone there in our absence, so see everyone there.
Okay. This Thursday, Simcoe has its annual meeting at 5:30.
That's right.
And Sergeant Bluff is hosting the annual meeting of Simcoe, so we're looking forward to that. And then, secondly, I wanted to thank the Sioux City Journal on the coverage that they provided for the closing of the Yonkers store. I thought that was very well done, and thank you for that contribution. It remains to be seen what will be happening out at the mall where Yonkers, hopefully they'll find a good, solid anchor to come and replace Yonkers. So that's all I have, Mayor.
While you're at Simcoe, some of us will be at the Sioux City Police Department Volunteer in Pleasing, I hope some of us.
Yeah, I was disappointed I was on the same night.
That's what I was thinking, it was on my being.
I have them 5:30 maybe.
I received a call from Mike from Hard Rock Friday, and your firemen rose to the occasion, I'm, the guitar was loose, and they were able to get up there, somehow, or take people up to secure that, which would have been a disaster in that wind, so thank your department for getting that done. I went to Davenport, not to buy a Corvette, just happened to be, it ended up there, but the one thing my young sons and son-in-law noticed that was pretty impressive in downtown Davenport, and it sounds pretty stupid, but it's how they kept the old paint on the old buildings. It really looks cool if we did that.
You mean the advertisements?
Yes, like in the old days, like the Nap and Spencer Building was painted like that. Davenport has that in their downtown, and it really, you don't think about it, but it really was a lot cooler than our buildings. I mean, I look at it over here, if they could somehow save some of that painting on that Beacons Building, we give a lot of money for facade programs, I'd almost like to see us, I don't know, you just need to go over to Davenport and look around, because it's kind of on every building.
Are they updated, though?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's the old stuff that they just keep painting.
Right.
And it looks really neat.
I think Dubuque does some of that as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we have a lot of old buildings that I think that would look neat on, if nothing else, then do these murals or something, you know, they have those too. We just need to do more of that type of stuff in our downtown on these old buildings.
That'd be a good project for Downtown Partners.
Listen, we've stretched them already. I know we've stretched already, Reagan, I don't, I'm not a...
Do it all in one day.
Uh-huh, I know. We'll have the city work on some of that, but the city has facade money, and we ought to seriously consider doing some of that, if people would come with ideas.
Would you like repainting the stuff that's already up there?
Yeah, old advertisements.
Yeah, like, I don't know if the bills, I don't know if the Hard Rock had old painting on it or not, but...
Old battery building.
The old battery, you know?
Well, but then you also worry about upkeep, too, because I do think a lot about that, and obviously on the side of like Francis Cantin, the mural, and that stuff, but then, gosh, it comes down and everything else.
Yeah, but that came down because the plaster was horrible, the building, but...
Tear down that wall.
A lot of good stuff.
A lot of it's painted right down the back.
I know, just, just, yeah, something to think about, and I just wanted to thank Alex for my lovely evening with supper with the scientists, and learning all about microorganisms. I will never be the same.
Right back to your college days?
No, no, I learned, I learned that the one thing we don't wash is our melons, and that's the one thing you should, because that for sure was picked by hand. So don't, don't cut it unless you wash it.
Because then you, yeah.
Don't think about it, so I learned that.
How come he got it going, we didn't?
Well, because I'm the most uneducated, he told me, and I could usually...
That's not true.
For like, for a long time, but I'm hoping to be back in two to three weeks. When I come back, I'll be walking a little taller and straighter, because I'm going to have new knees, so.
All right.
You get things done while I'm gone, let the good times roll the next...
We're finding we'll be implemented by then, right?
We're going to have signs up like that.
Mr. Moore's cake will be here. Don't leave, you need a piece of cake.
Pass that gavel down here.
Moore?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Thank you, Pete, for the very nice birthday. I collect these, so this means a lot to me, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is everybody going to be at the joint meeting Wednesday, or?
Yes.